Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll, please?
Alderman Grady.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Collier.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
The first item on this evening's agenda is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone who wishes to speak this evening, they could step up to the microphone at this time. Go ahead. Whoops, hold on. Let me turn you on here first. There you go. Go ahead, Dan. If we could get your name and address, please, for the record.
Name and address?
Yes, please.
Dan Pamenter, 2725 West Capitol Drive, Appleton.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have a concern about the way the city ordinance is enforced, and this would be in regards to refuse that is tagged and that's in violation from a garbage disposal perspective. And it's not the ordinance that I have a problem with. I think it's well-written, but I think it's interpreted wrongly and inappropriately by the city in their enforcement. The ordinance is 8.3.7 regarding the penalties for items tagged in violation of their refuse pickup. And in the -- under the penalties on the subsection Q, print 1, it says, "The Department of Public Works shall place a tag on all refuse placed in violation of the provisions of this chapter." And then going down into sub 2, it states, "At least 48 hours' actual notice written or telephonically shall be given to the occupant or property owner prior to city collection and billing." Okay, now, the way the city enforces it is that they put a tag on the item that's to be picked up that's in violation, and then they give a citation to the owner of the property and not to the person that is the person that created the violation. And they don't make any attempt to find out who the person that lives in the addresses. They just simply send a letter out, or not even a letter, they simply send a bill out to the owner of the property. So my concern is that it says, "At least 48 hours' actual notice written or telephonically shall be given to the occupant and/or property owner prior to city collections and billing." Okay? I have a house in Racine Street that I rent, and I had to rent it for almost two years. And apparently this renter placed a piece of furniture out on the curb, and it was tagged, and then I was sent a bill for it. And I didn't know anything about it until I got the bill, which was about a month later that I got the bill. So then I had to kind of play catch-up as to what it was and how it happened. And it didn't comply with the ordinance that the city had written at all. I spoke to the city attorney, and she advised me that the red tag is the written notice. And, you know, that is not a very reasonable practice. And apparently, the city's been doing that for a long time, and that's forever, is what I was told. And so if that has been the practice, I think it's inappropriate, unjustified, and simply it's just lazy. It's no way to communicate to the owner of the property. And it certainly doesn't give a 48-hour notice so that he can make any, or she or whoever the property owner is, can make any adjustments. And there's no effort at all made to find out who the resident was and that the violator that should have been held accountable was not. And they pass it on to the homeowner, which is not the proper thing to do, as far as I am concerned. And like I said, it explains it in the code in writing, and it's well-done. The way it's written, it's appropriate, but it's not appropriate the way it's enforced. And then, like I said, in the first sentence, it says, "That the Public Works shall place a tag on all refuse placed in violation." And that doesn't say that that's the notice. It's the next paragraph, at the end of the next paragraph, that said that they should be given a 48-hour notice. And so that's not one and the same. The tag is not the same as given notice because, in my case, and probably many of the other people that have been punished or fined, or whatever you want to call this, it's a $50 charge. And there wasn't any kind of consideration to the property owner. So, you know, that's, I guess, where I'd like the council to take a look at that and make an adjustment as to how the city does their practice on finding the people, the homeowners, and not go to the people that are responsible for putting it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pamenter. Is there anyone else this evening?
Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street.
Whoops, I'm sorry, Sandy.
Some observations, and I'll just start with the council packet. Under Communicator Minutes to receive, the Plan Commission, I was disappointed to read that the Plan Commission decided to scale back and just meet once a month, especially when two of the members were absent. So rather than meeting twice a month, they're going down to once a month. Part of the problem I see with that is notification to the public. The Plan Commission, the majority of work that they do revolve around zoning, site plan review, and things that several of them require public hearings. And in order to have a public hearing, you have to have proper notification as a legal ad in the newspaper. What I'm afraid is going to be happening is something will come up and a special meeting will be called, and the public would have to be constantly looking at the website to see if there was a special meeting. Right now, everyone knows it's basically twice a month on the Tuesdays, you know, every two weeks. So I think in the long run, I would rather have it the way it was, where you had a meeting and if there was nothing, it was canceled, rather than scrambling to make special meetings. The next thing I had highlighted, there was a -- just a comment regarding the LP agreement. It's just basically a comment about Calumet County. To me, it seems as if Calumet County just wants to wash their hands and make the municipalities maintain this property. They did the same thing with the tornado siren. They didn't want to provide it, so the city ended up having to take money out of the TIFT district to provide tornado siren. Now we're having to maintain the trail. You know, it's just kind of like, I think Calumet County's just dropping the ball. Under Action Items, the payroll, on page 3, there are three separate checks issued for each exceeding $300, so it's roughly $1,000 in total, for assessors, for hotel accreditation. My question basically is, I thought, I mean, we outsourced the assessor. That's a contract. So are these in-house people, or are we paying for the assessor to go to the seminar or accreditation? And then on page 5, this invoice appears every month exceeding $2,000 for 316 Racine Street, which I thought was the former location of the Health Department. I thought the Health Department moved into this building, so are we still paying rent on the old location on Racine Street? Under Action Items, there's an amendment to the Paint and Restore Program that adds nonprofits. Actually, I was surprised that it wasn't added because I kind of brought it up to begin with. In fact, I'm really not in favor of this program because I think it's not grant money that's coming from the state or federal government. It's a tax. It's a tax on all of us to supplement properties that have failed to maintain themselves. And then if it was open to everyone, it'd be one thing, but it's capped at properties less than $115,000, yet it's open to investors and flippers and absentee landlords who might have multiple properties that save $50,000. They have three of them. That exceeds the 115 cap, yet they can have three properties get a grant, yet someone, owner occupied with a single-family home, doesn't get a grant. So I've been having a problem with that. But I just thought it should either be open to everyone or owner occupied if they were going to put a cap on it. But I am in favor of the addition of the nonprofit organizations because, actually, I brought that up before. Item number 5, the property listing for the former City Hall, I just want to thank the council for referring that to have an appraisal done because the ballpark price was about half of what the appraisal came in at. So, good news there. And then...
And you're exceeding your time, so if you could finish up quickly.
Okay, then I'll hold my other comments for after the meeting.
Okay. Anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the minutes to receive in the Communicate -- whoops, I'm sorry. We skipped one. The next item is a presentation to the K-9 Corp. from the Veterans Honor Guard.
I'm Dave Mix, Commander of Post 2126 Manassas. And I'm really here to donate some money for the K-9 unit. I was here probably two months ago and did the same thing. But I have to tell you that this money here, there's a lot of you that may have donated to this because what it is, this is the military honor guard that does the funerals in the Fox Valley. I am the leader, not the commander. We don't have a commander. I'm just the leader. And it's the four organizations, Nina Manassas, the two VFWs, and the two legions got together and made one honor guard. What we do is, we get donations put back to us, and we don't really divide up and say, "Here, here's 25, here's this." We just throw it into a kitty. And the kitty has gotten kind of big. So we decided at our last meeting that we took some money out and we're donating it back to the community. This is really what the veterans do. We don't pocket a lot of money, but if we get it in, we use it for good resources. And we did Nina's K-9 last month, and we're doing tonight's K-9 here, and we did do some other organizations. Now, some of you may not know what this really means to us. It means that we did our deed for the veterans that passed away. Now we're doing our deed for the money that you gave us to donate back to some of the stuff that we need in the Fox Cities here. A lot of people don't even know that we exist because they probably didn't have a veteran or something that had passed away. But the people that do know us tell us, "Hey, you're doing a good job," and we appreciate that, and we appreciate the money. But, you know, like I said, we're not there to make money. If we get it, we'll take it. We thank the people. Everybody that sends us money gets a nice thank-you card, and then we just put it in the kitty. And tonight's one of the nights that we want to donate some money to the Manassas K-9 Unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through G and Communications H through I.
Is there a second? Some motion and a second from Alderman Kruger? Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Letter A, the Ad-Hoc Protocol Committee. I just wanted to make everyone aware that the Common Council passed a motion on September 18th to form the committee and also recommended that that committee come back with its recommendations within 30 days. And it's now been over 60 days, and we're still waiting for a recommendation.
Alderman Sevenik?
That's not necessarily true. I made the motion. It was my motion, and I never put a 30-day clause in there. Somehow, through the process here, 30 days was added because there was a memo suggesting it. I made the motion. There was no 30 days.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is the Consent Agenda. There are four items this evening. The Minutes to approve from the Common Council Meeting of November 20th, the Board of Public Works' recommendations from November 20th for the change order to Pfeiffer Brothers for the Fox River Loop-the-Lake Bridge Crossing. It was an add of $19,500. And a change order to Pfeiffer Brothers Construction on the Fox River Loop-the-Lake Bridge Crossing for a deduct of $10,000. And the County Highway LP Intergovernmental Jurisdictional Agreement with the Village of Harrison. Do we have any items that anyone would like separated this evening? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to separate the County Highway LP Agreement.
Alderman Zalinski?
Number 2.
Any others? Okay. Do we have a motion for Items 1 and 3? Alderman Sevenik?
At this time, I'd like for us to approve the Consent Agenda Items, 1, the Common Council, and 3, the change order to Pfeiffer Brothers Construction, a deduct of $10,000.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Kruger. Are you ready? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item 2 is the change order for the Pfeiffer Brothers Construction for an add of $19,500. Do we have a motion? Whoops. I'm not sure who was first. No?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Alderman Sevenik?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the change order to Pfeiffer Brothers for an add of $19,500. Change order number 1.
Is there a second? Some motion and a second from Alderman Benner? Is there any discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. This came through Public Works. We discussed a little bit about this last time. Just I'm not in favor of the increase at this time. I don't think it's very much needed, and I think in the future, there might be increases, and I just don't want to deplete that money for something that's more cosmetic than structural. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-1.
Item 4 is the Highway LP Intergovernmental Jurisdictional Agreement. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve the County Highway LP Intergovernmental Jurisdictional Agreement with the Village of Harrison.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second from Alderman Collier? Discussion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At the last Board of Public Works meeting, I addressed this issue, and of course, after reading the Minutes, I realized that I had voted wrong. And I guess I did know that, but I didn't -- we had such a long night. It would have been another 15 minutes to reconsider my vote, but everybody knew my position. And I think it's probably the first time I've ever done that. But I wanted to be upfront with this council, let them know, you know, that I had done As you recall, last time, I stated that, first of all, I am not in favor of this because, again, this is sort of like the bridge situation. They hand it over to the city, and now the city has to maintain it in the future. And I understand that we're getting some pretty good deals out of having this taken care of, especially with some apron openings and those types of things, and that's a good thing. But I know that county governments like to do this. They like to, "We'll fix it, and now it's yours." And that's short-term, and that's nice, and we get a nice road, maybe during our lifetime here, but that's not fair to future generations that now will have to maintain and pay for a new highway that apparently we are sharing with another community that I absolutely do not trust when they don't honor their own agreements just because of a technicality. So I'll be voting against this.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also echo what Alderman Sevenik said. You know, the county has some groin pains, too, and I sat at the corner at 114 and Lake Park during the budget meeting, and I would say 85% of the cars came down Lake Park, turned left, and headed towards Sherwood to the east. And with that amount of traffic that's chewing up that road, this isn't a city street. This is a feeder. People get off at 441. They use the shopping plazas on the end of Lake Park. And this isn't -- our city street is one over where we have our new subdivisions, and this is a county highway, and it should stay under their jurisdiction. It should stay under their dollars, and for that, I'd be voting against this, too.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The spirit of what Alderman Sevenik and Alderman Taylor said, I agree with, except when I look at that area out there, that's becoming really an urban environment, and it's not so much a county highway anymore. And when this first came up, I looked at it from a perspective that this is really our border for the City of Manassas. It's also the border for the Village of Harrison, and they're developing a lot. We're developing, trying to develop more, but it's a bit of a struggle out there. But it's about creating the environment for the people that live here. So whether it be for emergency services to be able to travel on that road, for people to have intermodal transportation along that road that live in the City of Manassas, and just for how we're creating an image as one of our gateways into this community, how that road looks is important to me and to the city. And for the folks that live out there and the businesses that are there, as we're trying to encourage additional business to develop along Lake Park, things like that, I thought it was important that this section of road be done in a manner that fits what we're trying to do in the city and for the image that we're trying to project. And so I think it's important that the road get done the way that it is, and this was about the only way it was going to happen. Otherwise, the county would have just resurfaced that and left it as it is, and it really wouldn't have served our taxpayers and our citizens out in that area very well and the people that come into the city. So I am definitely going to be voting for this, although I don't disagree with the mindset of, if it's a county road, you know, it'd be nice to leave it as is. But as things develop and the city does what cities do, we have a tendency of taking ownership in what we want our city to look like and how we want it to operate and function. So I think this is about as good as what we're going to get to be able to do that, and so I'll be voting in favor of this.
I'm sorry, Alderman Taylor. We should go next to Alderman Zalinski, and then I'll get you after that. I turned you off, though, because I hit the wrong button.
Just a question. If this was not the pass tonight, what would be the result?
Attorney Captain? Did you want to? The attorney said we already have an agreement. The problem with the agreement that we have is that it's a three-party agreement with the town of Harrison that no longer exists, and that's why we asked to renegotiate this agreement. And this agreement is actually more favorable to the city because we are only maintaining the portion from whatever road that is. What road is that? Winnipeg Drive to 114, where the previous agreement was from Manitowoc to 114.
So this was basically voted on before. We're just changing hands, basically, with?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. Alderman Taylor?
Our growth corridor goes out to Lake Park Road, and that's the final eastern end of our border. Some years back, there was a cheese factory at Manitowoc Road and Lake Park, and a young high school girl got killed there. It was right up to the intersection, and there was a vision control problem. And at that time, we asked the town of Harrison and Calumet County if they would go in on removing that cheese factory for the vision control problem, and it sat out there for a long time after that. Something else, Josh, I gave you a call and asked, "Who takes care of the lights at Lake Park and 114?"
That would be either the state or the county. We do not have any maintenance for those lights.
Can we pay for that?
We paid a very small portion, roughly 5% of it.
Okay. Thank you. So again, I feel that our border ends at this road and not on this road, so I'm voting against this.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. I brought this up at our Board of Public Works meeting. Do we ever find out why the town of Harrison's attorney never signed this agreement?
I do not know if we ever found that out or not, to tell you the truth. The old agreement, yes. I didn't write that one down. I wrote some of the other questions down, but I didn't write that one down.
Yeah, okay. I asked it, nobody knew, and I thought we were going to get an answer for it when we got back here. Apparently, we didn't do that. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? I, I will vote in favor of this. Oh, I guess I can't, but I will vote in favor of this. It was 4-4, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. I'm, if you want to vote, it, it, you can vote at this one.
Do we need to revote or not?
If you want, if you want your vote to appear.
Apparently, we need to revote again because it was a 4-4.
If you want to, if.
And they want my vote to be recorded within that, so.
So I think you can just.
Pardon? So the clerk is just requesting that we, we vote again so that I can put my vote in there as well, unless someone votes differently. Okay. So now you need to announce it.
Okay. There's a tie 4-4, so Mayor, if you'd like to vote.
I would like to vote as well.
Okay. Now it passes 5-4.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for the term of November 22nd through 30th. Is there a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 11/22/2017 through 11/30/2017 in the amount of $1,392,399.75.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second from Alderman Grady? What? Oh. Director Jacobs?
I just wanted to make, um, clarification for, um, one of the vouchers that was paid for with the credit card. On the description for the three hotels that, um, charges that are charged there that say assessors on there, it's actually for three individual assessors that traveled here for the accreditation for the police department. So they were actually assessors, but they're not the village, or I'm, I'm sorry, they're not city assessors. They're actually assessors that came to do the accreditation for the police department during, for three nights, for three individuals, uh, the dates between November 6th and November 9th.
Thank you. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Page five, combined page 14. Item three, Gumpke and Associates, uh, 316 Racine Street. Are we locked into a con? We moved into this building in June, and I'm just wondering if we're, we're re in a yearly contract with them or something?
Director McKinney, did you want to take that or Director Jacobs?
Pass.
So that item is to pay for our lease, which is up, um, in December. So we had a, a lease that we, um, entered into in 2015. So, um, that lease is good through December 31st, 2017.
Probably one more payment and that's it.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, page four, combined page 13. The sixth item down, $433 for a library trash can. And does anybody know what that trash can is? Is that outside, inside?
Who was the vendor to again? On the credit card?
Sixth item down, $433.67.
This is the credit card bill for the month, so.
This isn't for just a library trash can?
The, the credit card is actually a combined bill for all the party, all the department heads that have a credit card. So it all comes in one large bill.
Okay. Just reading it, all it says here is, uh, library trash can. And I was just wondering if we're buying.
John's looking for it. That's what they said.
I didn't see any hundred dollar hammers though, so that's. What was it, 1239? John, you can get back to us on that one. I can skip.
I can gladly do. I'm halfway through the bills, so I, I don't want to spend another.
Okay.
It's invoice 7351, if that helps.
Okay, we did find the winner here. It was for a Rubbermaid Ranger 45 gallon, two-door outdoor trash can, beige in color, $400 plus shipping of $33.67. So for $33.67.
You know, we have those ornamental cans that we had for the downtowns at the city garage. I wish they would have, uh, and those are very expensive too. I wish they would have taken that into consideration. Okay. Just down the, about halfway, uh, invoice number 8984 Wellness Luncheon. What is the Wellness Luncheon? Parker John's, $151.68.
Those were all salads, right?
It would have been, it would have been for possibly a luncheon learn. I have to see the exact.
Okay. And then down below, there's another $73 at the very end for a wellness luncheon. And that was Jimmy John's too, so I was just, for $73.50, so I was just wondering what these two are about.
Yep, so that's a luncheon learn again. We have a speaker come in, could be, um, this last one we had was Brent from TNT Fitness. So they come in a half hour, we eat lunch, and then he talks about a topic on wellness.
And this is in some budget that this is taken out of?
The wellness grant that we get from our insurance company.
Okay. On the flip page of that, page three, combined page 12. About halfway down, uh, invoice number 3414 Jefferson School Lights. Why would the school lights show up on our budget page?
That's in there. Um, it would be in the municipal building budget, but we'll find the actual invoice.
Director Tungate, are these the lights at the Jefferson Park Pavilion? I'm not sure what the dollar amount was here.
No, I have that coming up near the lamp replacement, Jefferson Park, $1,500. So I'm sure that's a different item. This is school, so.
That's it.
Uh, what, what's the dollar amount on it?
Almost.
$183.
It's, it is for the Jefferson School Parking Lot. Um, there was for a floodlight that was replaced, 175 watt for $119.99. There was a mount bracket included along with some conduit slip fitters and a photocell for the 183.96.
Why would that school be on our, under our budget? Wasn't that for our parking lot?
The parking lot itself is in the park, even though both the school and the park use that.
I thought those were separate lots.
No.
Thank you. I did have those, I did have those, uh, hotel accreditations that Ms. Taylor brought up too, and thanks for answering that. And if you flip that back to page four again, combined 13 page, the last, second to the last item, $1,100 for hotel training. Just what department was that? Invoice 9868.
It was in the police department.
Police department? Okay. Thank you. And. Page six, combined page six. Tempur-Pedic 9,000 for the mayor. Did you order a mattress for your office?
This is an office chair that's.
Oh.
Separated, it's not mine. It is for the deputy clerk.
So you get a Tempur-Pedic 9,000, huh?
It is a, it's not for me, no. It's because that is separated between the clerk, the mayor, and the attorney's budget.
Okay. Just didn't want to make sure it wasn't a mattress. That'd be spending too many times here, too many nights.
What is your point of order, Alderman Collier? It is, um, well received. We could move forward, Alderman Taylor?
Pardon me?
The point of order was well received, that we shouldn't be talking about mattresses.
All right. I'm sorry, it was a little tongue in cheek. Sorry. I'll eliminate the levity up here. Page five, combined five, uh, point set of order, $50.
It's point set as for the common area of the city hall, the lobby on second floor.
Okay. And just, um. Uh, the Jefferson Park Lamp Replacement, $1,500. Menash Utilities, just wondering how many lamps did we replace?
Director Tungate, do you have a understanding of that? That's.
John may have the invoice that has the specific number on it. I don't think the number was on it, but, uh, it was for the, uh, South Diamond Lamping, relamping of the, the lights on the South Diamond, the Jefferson.
Lights?
Yep.
Okay. And, uh, two more items, that's it. Page 11, combined page 20. United Sign Corporation, uh, invoice number 37714, $3,300 wayfinding sign. And I was just wondering where that sign is placed.
There are three of them.
Three?
There are two at the Public Works Facility and there is one.
Two at the what?
The Public Works Facility.
Okay.
Uh, in Plank Road. And there is one at basic, at, at Eighth Street, I believe, to replace a old sign that's ever seen on Eighth.
Okay.
Those are paid 50% through a grant from Convention and Visitors Bureau as well. And those will replace the old Public Works sign at Baldwin. I don't know if it's gone yet. We were out there recently, Josh. But that sign will come down.
Okay. And then on the same page, the last item, uh, second to last, Lawson Canal Appraisal, $1,600. There's no invoice number, but I was just wondering what that Lawson Canal appraisal was done, what, what that entailed.
We were, uh, doing some preliminary investigation work on the, the value of that property. There was not, uh, not an appraisal done. We were just trying to, uh, do some investigation, uh, work on that.
Okay. And what budget did that come out of?
What, what page is that on again?
Page 11, combined page 20. Second to the last, right above We Energies. Check number 59594.
Uh, TIFT, or Fund 489 is TIFT number 11.
TIFT number 11, okay. Thank you very much.
In the future, if you're going to have a long list, it would be helpful to get those to Director Jacobs before the meeting. And that way, he can look those up and then you can ask those questions. Alderman Collier?
I just want to applaud Alderman Taylor and the diligent work he's done and some of the best grandstanding I ever saw.
Alderman Collier, that was not called for. Alderman Grady?
Oh, I was going to turn, I was echoing your, your comments too, that in the future, if we do have questions to, don't blindside, let people know ahead of time.
And, and there's nothing to say that you shouldn't ask them at the meeting, but just so that he has the answers.
It's good to ask them, yes.
Ahead of time, so. Alderman Taylor?
And that's why we should move our meetings to Tuesdays so we have time to get the stuff. We run out of time on the day of.
Seeing no further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight, zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications. Is there a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2017, 2019 licensing period as, uh, listed in the memo.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second from Alderman Benner.
Basically, as we kind of started to look at implementing the program, it just came about that there may have been a loophole where all these funds could have been used by one specific project, whether that be for a nonprofit or a non-governmental entity. So we wanted to basically separate those out to ensure that these funds get spread out throughout the city and available to others that don't get other funds. So the basic intent of adding this ineligible condition is to allow that spread of the wealth and to make sure that this program can continue to support the redevelopment that it's intended to.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? I'm sorry, I didn't see him.
Can pause it, which will allow you to... Did everybody vote?
Appears...
Motion carried on, roll call 6-2.
Okay, now we'll go on to the liquor license application for Take-O-Tap LLC. Is there a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the liquor license application for Take-O-Tap LLC. Tony Eichland, agent, doing business at Take-O-Tap, 10 Tyco Street, for the 2017-2018 licensing year.
So motion and a second by Alderman Collier. Is there any discussion? Looks like none. Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item five is the City of Manasha property listing for 140 Main Street, the former city hall. Alderman Savick?
Are we accepting...
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
...the appraisal, or are we just, at this point, moving to make the motion to list the property?
So the motion, hopefully, would be to list the property at X price.
Okay. That's why I asked, because it's not listed that way, and now I've...
We didn't want to put a price in for you. We thought that that should be a council decision.
So I can change that, even?
You can make any price you want, from 50 cents all the way up to 10 million, if you want.
Yeah, that's probably worth it. I'll make this motion for the sake of discussion at this point, that we list the property the city owns at 140 Main Street at this point, and I would like to offer an amendment to the price. I think that they should be two separate motions.
So the motion on the floor is to list the building with New Mark Grubb-Fefferley through October 30th, 2018? Is that...
That's who we're using, yes.
Okay. There's a motion, Alex, and a second from Alderman Zalinski. Now, did you want to amend?
I have a discussion.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to have to discuss.
Yeah, can I discuss?
Sure.
Sure, you can.
You can discuss.
I kind of want to echo a little what one of our guests this evening brought up about having an appraiser. I was shocked, absolutely shocked, that council members up here chose not to have this building appraised. That is an absolute disservice to the taxpayer, and I feel very strongly about that. I'm very upset about that. Because the price that was listed, so that the people in the audience and the people on TV understand is that they wanted to just list this at $249,000, and there were some of us that believed that this building is worth much more. In fact, I think it's even worth more than what the appraisal came in, but they're the professionals. And the appraisal came in at $432,000. That's a huge difference. But I've also did a little of my own research and looked at properties in the surrounding area and in that type of professional building, and they're almost double this price, right within our own downtown. But I'm happy that the administration agreed to have this appraised. We got this appraisal, and it came in almost double of what we wanted to sell.
Alderman Collier?
I understand the building is worth $440,000 to the right person, and I look at it as a future Manasha, downtown Manasha. I think that building will be sold, I hope, within a year. But I think they tried to market it at a lower price to hope that somebody'd come in and buy up the two buildings and build something different, and you'd probably have a better tax base and a better building and something new and refreshing to go forward with downtown's plans, if we have any. My idea was, yeah, you can put it for $440,000, but if it sits for two years, would you consider lowering the prices? Because I don't see it being nothing but maybe an apartment building that could end up being a rough apartment building downtown, and I'm not for that. Thank you.
Alderman Savick?
Thank you, Mayor. As I... And I agree with my colleague. Yes, of course, if we have someone that comes into our community and wants to build another eight-story building, you betcha. That's what this body's to do, is then we negotiate. But right now, we are listing this property, and by doing that, we need to have a set price and a fair, marketable price. And I commend my colleagues that went along with having an appraisal done here, and if something does come, then we work on that and negotiate that.
So just for comparison purposes, one of the comparables was this building that we're sitting in. This building sold for 1.1 million. I don't remember exactly when that happened, about a year ago, maybe. So that was one of their comparable properties.
Thank you. Now, I guess I'll offer my amendment, that we go along with Fox City's appraisal company's appraisal of the $432,000.
So there is a motion to amend to include the list price... I already forgot what you said, 432,000? And Alderman Kruger? Okay. Seconded by Alderman Kruger, is there discussion on just the list price at this point?
We have that as a roll call vote, please.
Okay. And seeing no further discussion, then we could have a roll call vote on just the amendment at this point, which is the listing price.
Motion carried on, roll call 7-1.
Okay, the motion as amended at this point is to list the building with Grubb-Fefferley, New Mark Grubb-Fefferley, through October of next year at a list price of 432,000. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please? Alderman Kruger? Yours may not have taken. There we go.
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first item is ordinance 14 regarding lead water services. Is there a motion? Add everyone at once, please?
Here at this time, I'm going to remove my name from the ordinance.
Okay.
For introduction.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve O-14-17, an ordinance regarding lead water service, and I will add my name to that.
Okay, so there is a motion. Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Savick with the amendment that it would be introduced by Alderman Nichols rather than Alderman Taylor. Is there discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Just, I don't know if this would be a question for Tim or Attorney, but for an ordinance like this, for us to enforce this, is that legal for us to enforce something like this? Have them change their private section of the water service? Do we have legal standing ground at this point?
Attorney Captain?
Something going through the state right now, that they're discussing this, the legality of it?
Attorney Captain?
In my opinion, this ordinance is legal right now, if it were to be adopted.
I have not heard anything going through the state right now. They're working on some programs that allow utilities to fund or be a part of a funding system, but have you heard anything else, Tim?
No. And there are several cities that have ordinance of very similar...
To this one that enforces homeowners to change their lead services? Okay, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I just want to make it clear that in this go-around with this grant, my street is up on next summer for this replacement. So I want to abstain from this at this time, and that's why I removed my name, too. It wasn't that. I believe in this program, but for transparency and everything, in any conflicts, I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, about, if I remember correctly, about a year ago, this came before us, too, and it was not passed during the one in the council that actually wanted this to go through. That's when, when I got back to town, I was a little bit surprised to see this and read up on it. Was this pretty much initiated because of the grant money that was received by the state to help pay for these services?
It was a very close vote. On the last one, it was four to four, and we didn't have near the funding that we had at that time, but we did receive a total of $500,000 in grant money. And we did... There's a bill that passed. It was sent to the governor's desk, but I haven't heard... There's been no report that he signed it yet, but that would allow the utilities to put up money to start like a loan program, to continue a program throughout after the effect. So there was other things that came about that... Because some of the big concerns in the first go-around was the lack of funding for it. And so we made some very good improvements on that. We got $500,000 of grant money, and then our goal would be now, we know in 2019, there's no grant money available, but if there is any grant money in future years, we will be going after it aggressively.
All right, are you anticipating that the grant money that you already have will be depleted by the end of 2019, or are you figuring it'll carry on through a couple of years during this process?
Well, it's actually, we spent $190,000 of the $500,000 at this point, and that's going to probably be about it for this year. There might be a few more due to the weather, because once it gets cold, the contractors, it gets too expensive for them to dig them up. So I think that it will go into 2019, but I'm not sure that it'll make it through the entire year.
And on average, did the grant program allow us for $2,500 per customer to pay up to 95% of the cost?
Yes.
And what has been the average cost of replacement right now?
I don't actually have an average cost, but it's... They've ranged from $1,800 to $3,500, and the $3,500 was a very long run, so...
And this is also available to commercial entities and stuff, or is it just strictly residential?
As long as it's a... If they have an apartment upstairs, it has to be residential.
Okay.
That's part of the grant requirement, but if a commercial business has an apartment upstairs, that would make it eligible.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. The only... The big issue that I have with this is you're going to have a certain amount of people within the community that's going to have their water line paid for, basically, 95% and are going to have to pay $125 to $200, and as soon as this money's out, everybody else in the community is going to have to pay the full $25 up to $3,500 out of their pocket. And I don't... I just don't think that, as this is written, it's actually fair with the grant being put out there. So I would like to actually make an amendment to this ordinance to have it sunset at the end of the funding, and that way, the council can readdress it again, once the funding's done and deal with it at that time. So I'd like to make an amendment to the last section, Section 2, that reads, "This ordinance shall become effective January 1st, 2018." I would like it to change to say, "This ordinance shall become effective January 1st, 2018, and shall automatically be rescinded when the safe drinking program funds received by the Manasha Utilities are depleted."
Some motion and a second? Is that a... I should have asked first, but I think that's a valid way to state that, correct, Attorney Captain?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. She gave me your approval, so we're all good on that one. We have discussion just on the amendment at this point. There were a bunch of lights on before.
Kevin?
Is yours just on the amendment, Kevin?
Or...
I just didn't know if you had something on the amendment to some extent.
Oh, it is on the amendment, absolutely. I'm going to disagree with Alderman Kruger's amendment, only because the reason that, in my opinion, the reason that the funding is only available for two years is because that's the state's budget. It goes on a two-year cycle. They may add to that after that, depending on the effectiveness of the grant dollars, and we have the ability to sunset this on ourselves. If we decide that we're out of monies and we don't want to impose this on somebody, we can change the ordinance. To put a sunset on it right now, you could do that, then if the monies run out halfway through next year, we're still going to be... If you feel like we don't want to impose this on our residents anymore, then you would have to change it anyways. And the fact that we used $190,000 of the $500,000 says a lot about how much of it's out there and what we need to do. So I think that those dollars could continue to come from the state if this is a successful program, which, for all practical purposes, certainly appears to be so at this point. And I just soon leave it as is and then change it if we need to. And so I'll be voting against this. Thank you.
Is yours on the amendment, Attorney?
I have a question for Tim.
On the amendment or not? No, okay. Alderman Savick on the amendment?
I agree with this amendment. Almost what Alderman Vanner's saying is that we don't know what future budgets are going to be, and that's why we want this in there, because it could be one way or the other. And we may not all be here two years from now or three years from now, you know? So if they don't fund it, then this is done with, and we're not going to mandate...
I'm gonna disagree with Alderman Kruger's amendment, only because the reason that, in my opinion, the reason that the funding is only available for two years is because that's the state's budget, goes on a two-year cycle. They may, they may add to that after that, depending on the effectiveness of the grant dollars. And we have the ability to sunset this on ourselves. If we decide that we're out of monies and we don't wanna impose this on somebody, we can change the ordinance. To put a sunset on it right now, you could do that, then if the money's run out halfway through next year, we're still gonna be, if you feel like we don't want to impose this on our residents anymore, then you would have to change it anyways. And the fact that we used a hundred ninety thousand of the five hundred thousand says a lot about how much of it's out there and what we need to do. So, I think that those dollars could continue to come from the state if this is a successful program, which for all practical purposes certainly appears to be so at this point. And I just soon leave it, leave it as is, and then change it if we need to. And so, I'll be voting against this, thank you.
Is yours on the amendment, attorney? On the amendment or not? No, okay. Alderman Sevenek on the amendment?
I agree with this amendment. Almost what Alderman Benner's saying is that we don't know what future budgets are gonna be, and that's why we want this in there, because it could be one way or the other. And we may not all be here two years from now or three years from now, you know? So, if they don't fund it, then this is done with, and we're not gonna mandate this, because that wouldn't be fair to the average homeowner. Right now, if my street was being done, I'd jump on this, you know? It would, it definitely would help. It's not gonna solve the problem. That's what a lot of people have to understand. It's not gonna solve the problem, you know? It's just, it's gonna help the problem, basically, with lead or galvanized materials, and because you still may still have lead pipes in your own home. And so, whether it comes from the lateral and then comes into your home, you're still gonna have lead. And that's what I was saying last time, is that I decided to put in a filtration system in my home.
We're getting way off the amendment at this point.
Well, and that's the point. The funding is, if it's there, it's good. When it's gone, we're done. So, I would, I think that it's a good amendment, because I think if this amendment doesn't pass, this isn't gonna pass.
Alderman Collier?
Menasha's got a problem with lead. We wanna fix it. Right now, let's say we didn't have no grant money, but we have kids, and we're always talking safety and what's best and how we wanna look. If we didn't have this money, how would you vote? Because you're voting for your grandchildren, your grandchildren's kids, and you want them to be healthy and better and have a better chance. This is a tough one. I understand exactly where Steve's coming from, and I think that's very valid. But I also realize where the health department is, in the school system, in people with kids, and I sure don't wanna shell twenty-five hundred bucks out. I would jump on this if I had the opportunity to, but as long as we have the money, let's run with it and then hope we get money, because I think we gotta continue this, make it mandatory. And then there's a lot of people that can't afford it, but we'll have to find a way to do it, because if you wanna talk safety and what's best for the citizens, the children, and everybody in Menasha, you gotta find a way to fix the lead problem. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Manager Gauz, I have some concerns with the amendment that I hope you can address, namely, in section A, under the intent and purpose, it's number four, and our ability to meet the requirements for the lead and copper rule that are set by the DNR and, I believe, the federal government. So, could you address those requirements and why it's important that this ordinance move forward as written?
Yes. Right now, we are in violation of the lead and copper rule. We did not make it in our last set of testing. So, that requires us to replace seven percent of our lead services per year until we get back in compliance. And the DNR has a policy now that if you are not replacing the entire service, you are ineligible for any money for water mains from the state drinking water funds, which would really hamstring the water utility in maintaining its infrastructure. I mean, we have river crossings that we need to update, there's work we need to do, and that would really, not having this ordinance, and all it would take is then one person to say, "No, I'm not, I don't wanna do it." And we're required to replace their part of it, that would make us ineligible for the funding.
And why is it important to have that funding from the state Safe Water Drinking Fund?
Safe Drinking Water Fund interest rate is usually around one and a half or two percent. And if you qualify, sometimes it's even principal forgiveness, so that it's, there's no other place to get money that is as economical for the water utility as from the state drinking water funds.
So, if I'm hearing what you're saying, inserting a sunset clause on the ordinance would very much jeopardize our ability to meet that seven percent requirement on an annual basis, and also our eligibility for affordable loans?
Well, it cannot affect us doing the seven percent, because we are gonna be required by the DNR to do the seven percent per year. But it will affect the affordability of future main work. And it's really about the health of the children of Menasha, because that's who's affected the most.
And thank you for that. I was one of the objectors to the original version of the ordinance because of the concern of running out of funds. And I was also part of a working group, along with Alderman Collier, that involved folks from Menasha Utilities, the health department, the mayor's office, about how to address these problems. And everyone felt strongly that the utility got a better handle on how many lead services are in the city.
Yes, and right now, the count is four fifty-six.
And there were also a lot of discussion about what would happen when the funds run out. Did you wanna talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, at this point, we're looking at putting together a loan program, so that now there's been some discussion for the time allotment of how long they would have to pay it back. But to, from five to ten years, I think that mostly, we're leaning towards five years to pay it back. But it would be at extremely low interest rates, depending on how the PSC interprets the bill, whether or not we would be able to use the, absorb the administrative costs. But otherwise, we, you know, we might have to charge a half a percent or a percent to pay for the utilities' own hours that they administer these loans. But I'm not exactly sure how that's gonna be, because once the law goes, it'll have to go to the PSC, who will interpret how they're gonna enforce it, so.
And you feel there's sufficient time to address that while there are still grant funds available?
Yes.
To replace lead services? I feel it's really important to move forward with an ordinance that does not include a sunset clause, so that we, as a city and a utility, can, and a health department, can continue to send a clear message to our community about why it is we need to do this, and the importance of getting it done, and I will not support the amendment.
Thank you. You mentioned that there were around four hundred and fifty-six homes that are currently have the problem with it. And at seven percent, that leaves around thirty homes a year that have to be done according to follow the DNR thing. Now, does the grant specify that it has to be given out in twenty-five hundred dollar increments? Or was that something that the utilities came up with?
That's something that the utility commission did. Without an ordinance, people were not replacing there. I mean, we did Second Street this year, and there was twenty-six lead services on that street, I believe. And we were offering fifty percent, up to a thousand dollars to replace it, and I think there was three that replaced it. And so, our fear is, from the utility standpoint, that, you know, we have five hundred thousand dollars and a chance to replace a bunch of lead services. So, we went back and we discussed it, and that's when we increased it to ninety-five percent, up to twenty-five hundred. Some of the commissioners felt very strongly that the customer or the citizen have a little bit of money in the game, so that, you know, I mean, they had to at least pay the five percent, so that it was a portion of it. And since that, it has taken off. I mean, and people are, I mean, but we can, I mean, we got a hundred and, excuse me, we've replaced seventy so far this year, so it's gonna probably end up at eighty, so we're moving along. I mean, we've done a lot of replacements. I mean, it's no different than if the city gets a block grant and somebody gets, you know, a donation, or, I mean, a grant to fix up their house, and when the money's gone, the money's gone. I mean, that's the way grant money is. I mean, a lot of communities require not only the water service, but the sewer line being pulled at the same time. And this would only be when we go and dig up the street and replace the main. So, when we replace the main, we replace our portions. That's why there were several that are, were available to, we obviously didn't replace that many services or that much main this past year, but for the past twenty years, we've been replacing our portion of lead service, even though we're required to, but we did it. And so, we're allowing this grant to go back to anybody that we have replaced our service, where we don't have to dig up the street and put that cost on the utilities of repairing the street and, you know, because then it just gets unaffordable for the utility to participate.
Was there any particular reason with the five hundred thousand, why that just wasn't divided by four hundred and fifty-six? And say, each resident can have X amount, whether it be eight hundred dollars or whatever, and then combine that with an ordinance like this? Because that'd be a lot easier pill to swallow than for, say, like Alderman Taylor's gonna have his replaced, and everybody on Broad's gonna have theirs replaced, and if theirs average is twenty-five hundred dollars, they're paying five percent of that, which is a hundred twenty-five dollars. But then when it comes to Third Street, there's no money left, and they're gonna be having the stuff be paid to hold twenty-five hundred dollars, and that's what I have the issue with.
Well, I understand that, but there are some stipulations on the money, and part of it is that we have it for three years. So, we got a grant in two thousand seven, beginning of two thousand seventeen, and we have three years to spend it. And then we got, and that was three hundred thousand, and then in two thousand eighteen, we receive another two hundred thousand, and we have three years to spend that. And if we, whatever we don't spend goes back to the state drinking water, and we just do not have the funds in the utility to, because if we went and replaced four hundred ninety-six of them, I mean, the cost to the utilities would be unaffordable. I mean, I would love nothing more. I mean, getting this ordinance and getting the lead out of the water system has been my goal since I took over as water utility manager, and I've been working hard to try and get it, because I think it is very important for the people in Menasha to have lead-free water.
Well, and I fully agree. It's, I'm just looking at the fairness as far as.
I understand, I understand.
And I will not be able to support this unless there's the sunset clause, because even with the sunset clause, if the following council, when this thing does expire, wants to implement the same type of ordinance without the funding, they're more than welcome to do it, but, you know, with me sitting here looking at this, I won't be able to support this without a sunset clause and the money for now. Thank you.
The only other question I had is, winter's coming, and let's say somebody did not take advantage of your program last year, but all of a sudden the main broke in front of the house. If there's any house that you, the road you did last year, any house that had a broken main, you would ask to replace everything there at that time too, then?
Yes. We actually have a policy, that if there's a leak and we're gonna, whether it's even on the customer's side, and they go in and have to replace their service, we replace our portion, just because of, when you go in there, and that's another part of the issue, is when you go in and you disturb a lead service, the lead in that home skyrockets for a long period of time. It could be three to a year of extremely high lead going into that house after you disturb it. So, you know, and that came out through studies they did after the EPA and DNR required utilities to replace their portion of it. And when they, that's why there's the big push now is to not have any partial services, because it, it skyrockets. I mean, we did some testing on a home that had a leak, and it probably went up thirty times what it was before. And so, I mean, we know that it does, that it is correct, that it goes way up, and that's, so that's why we will not, you know, if there's a leak and they replace it, we replace ours, because we do not wanna put that kind of lead in somebody's home.
So, whoops, that happened quick. Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. So, as you were mentioning before on the DNR's safe water funding, or the grant, the grant funding for loans and stuff through the utility, so if the lead service is not replaced all the way up into the house, they will not give us funding? Even if our portion is replaced?
What they restricted the funding for is any future main projects. So, it will not affect the grant money, the way that I understand it.
Yes, so.
But if we wanted to go borrow money to, because you're doing Racine Street, and we got an old main in there, and we don't have enough in the operational budget to cover replacing that main, we will borrow money from the state drinking water at one or two percent and replace that main. And we will be unable to do that if we do any partial lead service replacements. That we would be disqualified from receiving any funds for that.
Do we do that often, borrow from them?
In our ten-year plan, we look to borrow about three times for main projects. One of the big ones is we have a sixteen-inch river crossing at the end of Appleton Street that's been in there for eighty-some years, and so that's gonna be, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars itself to replace that river crossing. And then with the new bridge that's going in, it kinda goes right up through the backyards on the other side of the, so it's definitely gonna need to be done in the very near future, so we get, because we're gonna have to move it out of that bridge area as well.
So, as you stated, the state is basically restricting our ability to borrow on private homeowners' lead service?
Yes.
So, that's, I guess that's their decision, but, and as far as enforcement would go with moving forward with this, it would just be put onto their tax roll, or how would we mandate this gets done?
Yes, if they didn't pay their portion, it is available to go on the tax roll. Or at the sale of the house, it could be collected when the house sold, if there was outstanding balance.
Okay.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I'm looking at what the amendment is up there. Is that actually as Alderman Kruger stated it? Because I thought he said that it would be two years, we had a two-year sunset, and this states that when the grant money's already depleted, then it would end.
I don't remember you giving a date, Alderman Kruger?
No, I did not give a date on it. It was rescinded when the, when the safe drinking program funds are depleted.
Oh, I thought you said two years.
No, no, I didn't put a time with it on it.
Oh, they are grant funds, so it could be safe water drinking funds grant or something to that effect, but. Who do you wanna call him, Tim?
It's actually a state drinking water loan with principal forgiveness, so I don't know how that qualifies. I mean, I call it a grant, because I lack of.
So, if the ordinance does not pass, we still have our grant program that the utility has, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Just trying to be a little careful here, because, little pun intended, I don't wanna put the baby out with the bathwater here, you know, to throw the whole thing away just because of a sunset on it. I think that would be, that wouldn't be a good thing. Thank you. Thank you.
With principal forgiveness.
Mayor Alderman Zelensky would like to speak.
Alderman Zelensky?
Thanks. Um, so, moving forward with this, and so let's say this passes, the money runs out, we come to a point where there's no money available for grant funding these, this, all this gets thrown out because of the deplete, at the depleted, the sunset date. So, we're moving forward, replacing these services as a community, could we still be eligible for that state safe water borrowing if we didn't replace our section, we just led the whole thing lead?
Well, we would, uh, it's all gonna depend on whether or not we make our-
Our total, our seven-
Right, if our lead, if our, if we make our lead and copper testing, we can get rid of that mandate to be, to do 7%. I mean, we're doing everything we can. I mean, we're doing a, uh, we're implementing a unidirectional flushing program. Uh, we're also op, trying to optimize and, and do some studying on how to optimize our corrosion control program better, but even, and, I mean, we've had the program in place for several years, but we were extremely close every time we took this test over the last 15 years, but we've always made it up until this point. Then we had the one over, so now, now we have to test, instead of 30 samples every three years, we'll be testing next, next year 60 samples twice a year, and we have to make the 90th percentile under 15 parts per billion each time of those, and if we don't, then we will continue to have to do it twice a year until we get, uh, five tests in a row that are, uh, under the limit, and then, then that would resend the, uh-
The seven.
The 7%, but if that 7% is still in requirement, we would be in violation and risk enforcement action from the DNR for not doing the 7%.
All right, thank you. Attorney Captain?
And from a risk perspective, we already know that you cannot replace only one side, so on a water main project, if people were not forced, it can't, we cannot do it, because we already know what will happen, that the lead will, um, increase the potential for having some catastrophe, and being sued would be too high. We could provide water filters or something like that, um, but we would not be able to, regardless of the funding, we would not be able to only replace our part of the system and not the other half of the system. The risk would just be too great for the, um, for the city.
And I'm really under the impression that that's what the EPA and the, and the DNR are looking to accomplish, put the cities between a rock and a hard place, that they don't have much choice to do what most, a lot of cities are doing.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is my third time for my life, so I kind of apologize for that, but, um, if we get to a point that there is not any funding for this grant funding, and we still have to replace our 7%, how does that get paid for?
Well, that, that, our portion comes out of the utilities', uh, revenues, so we are required to replace it, and because it's the utilities' portion that is, comes right out of the rate payer's, uh, cost.
But that's only the utility portion.
Correct. It gets, it gets a lot more complicated from the curb stop in, because that's private property, and, um, that's, that's what's been the problem from us. We, you know, we, we attempted several attempts to try and get a loan program originally, uh, so that we could borrow the money to the, to the residents and, and have them, but up until this bill went through, um, this two, two houses, we were not allowed, as a utility, to use any rate payer's money on private property. Now, that, the new bill that just went through allows that to take place, but it also limits that if, uh, the utility starts a program, they could pay for up to 50% of it, but no more than that.
Where are we taking the water test from, the water sample?
Uh, people's kitchen sink.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it's, it's a difficult, uh, test for utilities, because we're required to take it from the person's tap, but we have no control from the street into the house, or what happens in the house, but we're required to have lead, the water not coming out with lead, and, and so it's, it's very difficult, because we have no control over what happens to that service. That's why we're looking for this ordinance, so we can, you know, get the lead out of the, out of the ground and, and-
At least you get it to the dwelling anyways.
Yes.
Yeah. As I say, that'd be very difficult, when you're accountable for all of that.
Right.
And, and you're not responsible for the piping to get you there.
And it, and it is extremely rare that there's lead piping inside. Now, there is fixtures that have the old brass that can have up to 8% lead in them, but now we've tested houses for years, till they change, we used to do, because it was lead and copper testing, so we did 15 copper sites with copper services and 15 lead, and we've never had any problems in any of the copper sites that could have had brass fixtures and stuff, but in the last few years, uh, they required us to put, to test all 30 sites as, with lead services. So, it makes it even more or less likely that we're gonna pass it in the future, because in the, in the past with lead and copper, so they allowed you to take 15 of 15, now it's, now we'll be doing 60 houses with lead services.
So, again, I kinda go back to the fact, we can't use ratepayer money on private property, and if we have, if those have to get replaced, how do they get paid for?
Well, that, the, the bill that just went through would allow us to use ratepayer money-
Oh, yeah.
-to a portion, and that's what we're looking at, uh, using to hopefully start the loan program, and like I said, it would be, you know, we wouldn't, depending on how the PSC, uh, reg, or required us, if we could, if we could use the money to start the, the loan program and absorb the administrative costs, we could, we might even be able to do a, an interest-free loan. Now, it's, it's too early, they just passed it, like I say, I don't even know if the governor signed it yet, I haven't seen anything come across my desk that he has, but I, I don't think he's opposed to it, so I'm assuming it's gonna be signed, uh, but, you know, some of that stuff still needs to be meted out before, you know, and, and that, so we have time with this grant money to work through the issues.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Krueger?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Again, this, by putting the sunset clause in here doesn't, well, it kills this particular ordinance at this particular time, but it also forces the council and everybody else to come up with a solution to this, to actually make it fair for all residents. And the council, I, I mean, at, at 7% as of today, with the full 456, we're talking around 30 homes a year. Every year that 30 homes are gonna get done, that 7% number's gonna actually drop, and you know, next year it's gonna be 27 homes, you know, and eventually we're gonna get down to 15. And to do 30 homes, if the city actually budgeted right and, and, uh, took care of stuff, they just have to set aside $75,000 to reimburse homeowners to equal the grant money that other people are gonna get, until another grant comes along or something. It, it's not like the city is helpless on this and can't come up with a solution when this thing does sunset. There are options for the council to be able to do, uh, to put it in budget and actually make this fair for the residents. I just cannot support an ordinance that's not gonna be fair across the board to everybody, because we do have this grant money out there. So, this will also actually force the council to address this issue. If it's, if this isn't in here and there's no sunset, this ordinance, it just could be forgotten about, and it's just gonna overlay and go right into, uh, charging people $2,500 for their thing, and it's gonna be completely forgotten about and never addressed. This sunset will also force the council, whoever's on the council, to actually address this, to help this thing keep going forward and make it fair for every citizen and, and homeowner, and hopefully by then, maybe the state will have more grant money at that point in time, and it, it keeps everything going smooth. Thank you.
Can I ask you the possibility of, uh, requiring the utilities to come back to the common council with a proposal, when the money's gonna run out, before the money runs out, so we can come back and explain the program that we were able to put in place to hopefully replace this, and then it could be discussed at that point, and, and, you know, and-
I think they would, you'd wanna do that.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say that. I, I think that would be something, I don't think that's something the council has to vote, that, tell you to do it. I, I would expect the utilities to do that, knowing that this is running out, you know.
Well, we will.
Right, and, and, and just address this. I just, I really do believe that a sunset is, yeah, I mean, if, it serves two things, it tries to make the system fair, and it also forces the city to deal with the, with the issue, no matter what, in the near future.
The city and the utility.
Pardon?
The city and the-
Right, yeah, yeah, excuse me, yeah, but both the utility and the city, it, it actually forces them to come up with a solution to this, because it's just, it's, it's inherently unfair to allow certain people only to have to pay $125 to have their service replaced, and when this loan program is out, everybody else has to pay $2,500. So, one person in one block's gonna pay $125, and, and two years later, another one might have to pay, uh, 200 or 2,500. Uh, so it, it, the object is to make it fair for everybody, and I think the sunset clause would force that issue.
I understand where you're coming from. I disagree with it, because, I mean, I, I look at it, you, you know, when you just pass the, uh, paint and repair, that don't go to everybody, so is that fair that somebody whose house is worth $115,000 can get free money to paint their house, but the guy that's got $130,000 can't? I mean, I, I understand your concern about the, the homeowners, but the truth of the matter is, when it comes to grants and, and everything else, it's never fair, because some people get them, some people don't. I mean-
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Our, our conversation has strayed from the amendment, so I hope you'll-
A little bit, it kind of strayed with-
Yeah.
-the first person, I think, already, so.
I think what we may be forgetting in all of this is that beyond the dollars and cents of it, we're dealing with a public health issue here. Director McKinney, could you shed some light on that aspect of this ordinance?
Point of order.
What is your point of order?
Let, let's, let's deal with this amendment, and then when we get to the issue itself, then we can address public safety and public issues.
We, we allowed everyone else to go way off the amendment, so as long as it is something- Pardon?
This is about a sunset clause, let's stick with that, and let's move forward.
Well, I am going to say that we've already been off topic, so I would allow Alderman Nichols, if you'd like to make a motion.
I challenge the ruling.
Okay.
That's inappropriate. We are dealing with the amendment, your man.
Okay, then, there's, then we'll have to take a vote on challenging my ruling to allow Alderman Nichols the same flexibility that I allowed the rest of you.
Could you review the, um, criteria for that vote, please?
And I guess it doesn't-
Attorney, Attorney Captain?
It doesn't really matter which way we do it, either we vote, how would you like to do this?
I don't know.
It doesn't matter which way, but if they agree that we should sustain what Alderman Sevigny wants, and to be very strict about it, they would vote how way? Which way? They would vote no. So, if we want to be very strict about just the amendment, you would vote no.
And if we would follow Robert's rules, the way they're supposed to be followed-
And if we would have followed-
We would vote.
And if you wish to-
Sustain.
-sustain my ruling that others were allowed, you would vote yes. So, if you want to limit discussion on just the topic of the amendment, vote no, and otherwise, vote yes. Does that make sense to everyone? And we'll need something, a roll call vote of some sort, I'm not sure.
Why not? It's just the challenge of the amendment.
Yeah.
You might probably not waste more time doing this than if we would have just addressed it by voting on the amendment, and then addressed it as amendment.
So, if you would, we'll open this up for voting, then if you vote no, we want to limit discussion to just the amendment. If you vote yes, it would be to allow to discuss the entire ordinance at this point. Would you, yes?
Point of order?
Yes.
I seem to recall Alderman Taylor stating that he was abstaining from this item way back at the beginning of the discussion.
E, either way, it would have failed.
Ruling vote.
Still would have failed, either way.
No, no.
So, I, I will uphold the failure, whether Alderman Taylor's, Taylor would have or wouldn't, but Alderman Taylor should not be discussing or voting on future items if he wishes to abstain. Otherwise, you should actually vote. Alderman Sevigny, did you?
If we just vote on the amendment right now, then we can do what you want.
You can, okay. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Alderman, Alderman Sevigny, is there a discussion on the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, and are you ready to do that then, or not?
On the amendment.
Okay, this is on the amendment for the ordinance to sunset. So, Alderman Taylor would be abstaining. How did we get?
I don't know, we shouldn't have a 4-4.
How did we get a 4-4 if Alderman Taylor is abstaining?
Yeah.
Did you vote, Alderman Taylor?
No.
Okay, then you're not abstaining. Okay, so the vote is-
Should have.
You either have to abstain from the entire process or vote on the entire process. You can't pick and choose which ones.
Okay.
Okay.
Amendment fails on roll call 3-4, with Alderman Taylor abstaining.
So, we are, to the ordinance as originally, um, proposed at this point, Alderman Sevigny?
I'm gonna be voting for this with the amendment or without the amendment. I, I just think it's a good program. I sat in the gallery last year, and I watched this process, and I was amazed that the council voted against it. And all I wanna say is that the people that are cheerleading today were the ones who voted against it last time, and that disappointed me, and that was the clear message that I heard, and that really bothered me. And you know what? There are a number of people on Second Street that didn't have this done, because you didn't allow for, for them to have this access of the $300,000 that was funded, and I found that just amazing. So, I'm very glad the utilities had the foresight to bring this back, so we can protect our public. It's very important. Um, lead has been a major issue throughout the entire country, and that's why these types of dollars are being brought forward. I understand, um, Alderman Krueger's amendment, because he wants to make sure that this is equitable to everybody as far as cost. Um, I commend Mr. Gauz and the Manassas Utilities for pushing this forward, to continue to do this, to provide safe water for our community, and I would encourage my colleagues to vote for this today.
Since you're already sitting down, Tim, I just wanted to comment that the utilities did make this grant program retroactive. did make this grant program retroactive to everyone who had already used the program. So, they are paying the same amount as anyone else and you did get several people to replace their mains when we did increase the grant funding at that point on Second Street. I don't know if all of, you might want to, you might need to stand up, I guess. Did everyone on Second Street then take advantage or not?
I'm not sure that everybody did, but the majority of them did come back and do it. So, I mean, we did get quite a few of them. I don't have the exact list in front of me. I mean, and I've looked at that list so many times that the numbers kind of run together after a while, but we did do quite a few on Second Street after we raised the amount.
Alderman Sevignac?
Not all of them. Thank you, Mayor. I have a question because I think there's a, I need to know this. As public officials and city employees, are we entitled to this ourselves? Because I don't think we are. I think it could potentially be a conflict of interest. So, I know Alderman Taylor has been voting because he's worried it might be a conflict of interest in his case, but I'm not sure if he's even eligible for it. So, I'd ask if the city attorney may have an opinion on that and if she doesn't, if she could find one for us?
Do you want to comment?
I don't know what the grant program is.
She just said she doesn't know what the grant program is.
Well, here's the thing.
But the grant program is open to anyone, so as long as you are part of a class that anyone within the city would be eligible for, typically you would be eligible if you're not creating a special program just for yourselves.
Right. And I think that's why Alderman Taylor was probably nervous. I'm just guessing this. But, you know, when we receive funds from, from a policy decision we just made here, it could look as a conflict of interest. I mean, I certainly wouldn't mind having this done, but my road's never going to be done, so I'm never going to be eligible anyways. That's why I put the water system in that I did.
Sure.
But could we find, get a ruling on that at some point?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, for being here.
Alderman Collier.
I'd like to let it be known that over the last couple of years, we have fought diligently with the water department in regards to making more money, finding more money, making it more feasible for people to do this. And I know that grants are only here for so long. I understand where both sides are going, but now I'm at a point where I wish I could get the city or somebody to pay the other part, but we're going to get X houses done, we're going to get the numbers done, we're going to work on our safety and this will be a success and that's why we'll have to vote it in tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor, are you abstaining or not abstaining?
Um, Mayor, I just have a question.
If you're abstaining, you cannot partake in the discussion.
I have a couple of questions.
If you're abst, are you abstaining from the vote or not?
We can leave the question answered. There are a lot of... You know, you let everybody else speak, Mayor, before you buy a bigger rubber.
It's not up to us to decide if he's abstaining, but if he's going to ask me right now, I'm not going to answer him. Please come to me before I...
If you are going to ask questions at this point, I would say that you're required to vote. So, if you don't plan on voting, I'm not going to let you partake in the discussion.
Okay, Mayor.
Do you plan on voting?
This is a mandatory...
This is partaking in the discussion.
Right. And this is part of the mandatory requirement of putting, making people change their leadlines. And I'm asking, does that include public officials?
It does.
It does. Okay. Because we just made an amendment on the, as the director of the water plant said, on the paint and restoration program and we made it that the council couldn't participate in that program.
We are not talking about the program that is a utility program.
I understand that, but I'm saying it was brought up here.
We have no control over that.
That's why, that's why I'm a little confused with this, Mayor.
Point of order.
Yep, point of order.
What is your point of order? I have two of them, I guess. Alderman Nichols? Oops. Alderman Nichols, what is your point of order?
Alderman Taylor clearly stated that he was abstaining at the beginning of this discussion and there are rules regarding that. So, is he now going to be part of the discussion or remain an abstainer?
I would agree with you that if he is abstaining, he needs to end discussion. Are you abstaining or not? If you will not answer, we are going to assume that you're abstaining at this point.
Mayor, I'm representing the people of the district here. And item C1, I would like clarification on that.
Alderman Taylor, you are, you have indicated to us you're abstaining, so we are not going to allow you to participate in the discussion anymore at this point. So, is there any further discussion at this point?
Yes. I changed my mind.
Alderman Zalinski? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. So, I'm just going to explain my continuing vote on this. I will not be voting this forward for myself because I think we're jumping the gun on this. We don't know what our revolving loan program is going to look like. That's why Alderman Kruger made the amendment to make this come back after the funds have run out. I just think we always complain about jumping the gun on subjects and this is one of them where we're jumping the gun when we don't know the future. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Gauz, some clarification on a statement that was made. A grant program was available last year from the utility even though the ordinance was not in place yet. Is that correct?
Correct.
And for folks that may have passed up that opportunity in the past, it is still available to them.
Correct, as long as our portion has been replaced.
Thank you for that.
At the same level.
Yes. It was retroactive. I mean, so anybody who replaced it when they got $1,000, we went back and made them whole up to the $2,500 or whatever the 95% was. So, we did, we did make it retroactive and we cleared that with the DNR and we did do that. So, anybody, even before we changed the price, we went back and did that.
Thank you for that clarification. And for those of us that were big dissenters in the beginning, we have worked diligently with the working group that I mentioned that included the water utility, the health department, some of the aldermen and the mayor's office to reach what we thought was a good compromise and a fair ordinance. We had some concerns that we worked through together and had a lot of questions answered before this was brought before you. So, I really hope that the council can move forward with this tonight and send a clear message to the community that this is the direction we're moving in.
I'll just leave it at that.
Alderman Taylor, are you... Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's really not my intent to try to change anybody's mind up here. I just want to let some folks know who may be watching this. Alderman Kruger brought up a point about the city taking ownership in this if we end up running out of grant dollars and that we could subsidize it. That's still something that if we feel strongly about we can get it done, as our role as an elected official, we still have the ability to do that. So, if they come back and tell us that funds are running low and feel we need to do something, then that's our responsibility to act on that at that point and get it put into the budget if that's something or seek additional grant dollars or whatever is available at that time. So, I don't think it'd be worth to not approve this based on that mindset because certainly you would have time to be able to act on that if you feel the city needs more ownership in this program. Thank you very much.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the people who worked on this together.
Alderman Taylor, are you planning on voting at this type or, okay?
I learned something here during all this discussion that it wasn't clear early on and I learned that I'll reserve my, not voting on something and mention it later in the conversation instead of earlier. But let me just say...
If you...
Item C1, notification to property owners. Property owners in the project area will be notified in writing of the capital improvement projects involving public water mains replacement and lead services on the utility side. The notification shall be at least 30 days prior to the commencement of construction. You know, I think it'd be really wise that, we just passed a budget with 2018 and I think at this point with the reconstruction streets, notice should go out as soon as possible that people understand what this program is going to be and it's mandatory and there is a grant program. So, I can see notifying them 30 days before the construction, but I would like to see something that, unless it's in here, that we notify them ahead of time.
This was a question that was asked and answered at the last meeting and it had to do with the fact that notice will go out now when they know what the projects, or when they know what the projects are. The reason for the 30 days, as I recall, the general manager spoke about that issue and indicated that they do not know all of the lead services and if one is discovered at a later time, then, you know, obviously they can't give notice until they discover it. So, if they discover it at the project site or something, then that would be when notice is given, but they would be providing notice as soon as they know that the project is moving forward. And it was, the 30 days is just in the event that, because they don't know all of the homes, that if one is later discovered, they would be giving the notice at that time.
Okay, Mayor. 30 days was intended to be a worst-case scenario because something changed. I mean, our full intention is now we will be going out for bid early next month, maybe even later this month, and as soon as the bids are ready and we know where we're going for sure, we will notify those people. So, I mean, our intention is to try and give them three months.
Yeah. I would like the city, and of course, it sounds like the attorney said that that was discussed at the last meeting. I don't see that put in here, but I would like to see us, Mayor, going to notify people when we know their project is coming up for, let's see, this summer.
That would be the utilities.
Pardon me?
That would be the utilities that would provide that notification.
Okay. All right. And I'd just like to say, there's no doubt that the health of our citizens is first and foremost up here. And talking with Director McKinney from the health department, in the interim, there is a solution here and the health department has water filtration kits for $15 and a replacement filter for five. So, people concerned and they want to get out ahead of this before their service is changed, please stop by the city hall here and pick up a water filtration kit. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, we could have a roll call vote at this point?
Motion carries on roll call 6-2.
Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment at this point?
Tim Gauz, 98 Fox Street. Thank you for passing that ordinance and I would personally like to apologize that I was out of line when I brought up something in the past, so I apologize for that.
Sandra Abel Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I didn't want to spend my five minutes on this, but I appreciate Alderman Kruger's effort to create an amendment to what was just discussed regarding the lead replacement. I think the waters got really muddied on here. There was an ordinance which is separate from the grant, which is separate from the safe drinking water loan program, which is separate from the pending on the government, governor's desk, the PSC allowing another loan program. And I think everything got twisted around where people were confused on what was actually Anyhow, with that said, back to what I was talking about earlier, because I have to stick with the agenda. Coming up under personnel, item D3, and just to clarify, I am not opposed to the mayor being authorized to give a bonus to staff members. This is basically a reflection of Act 10. What I'm concerned about with the way it's written is that it's a blank check. I think if you want to go into closed session or something, or whatever you did in the past, is it a percent of salary? Is it a flat amount? And I guess my problem with giving out bonuses is that, again, the people that are named here, you know, are well-deserving of it, but there's always somebody that works their butt off but doesn't get reflected because they're not, you know, seen in the public as much. The other item I wanted to bring up was under Board of Public Works, and I'm kind of confused why this is under Board of Public Works, because I would have thought this would come from the police department. D3, the traffic calming policy. What it basically sounds like is rather than giving out speeding tickets, we're going to allow the public works department to put up a flashing sign in the neighborhood and then assess that neighborhood, the cost of the flashing sign. To me, that's ludicrous. That's how I'm reading it. It just is kind of like, for me, just like code enforcement or anything else, if you want to stop a bad practice, you hit them in the pocketbook and they're going to remember it. You give them a ticket and they're going to remember, I shouldn't be speeding down this street. And there was more, but it's been a long night. So, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I would like to make a motion to have a referendum question placed on the next common council agenda for December 18th, 2017.
Point of order.
What is your point of order?
Letter N, which is where we are in the agenda, is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. I'm not sure how this request fits into either one of those categories.
Alderman Taylor had requested an item be placed on the agenda. As chair of the committee, I denied that item based upon the fact that it was on the agenda once, actually twice before in my opinion, once in this session and once in a previous session. If he wishes to place that item back on the agenda, he would have the opportunity to do that by making a motion and the council would have, the rest of the body of the council would have the opportunity to override my decision at that point. So, that's what he is doing at this juncture.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. Alderman Taylor?
I made my motion.
What was the motion? I'm sorry, I...
That's fine. I would like, I'd like to make a motion to have a referendum question placed on the next common council agenda for the December 18th, 2017 meeting.
He asked you regarding what?
Did you want to say what it was regarding?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you, Mayor. The Racine Street Bridge.
Okay. So, there would be... So there would be no discussion on this item if the council wishes to, oh, do we have a second?
Sorry.
Some motion and a second. There would be no discussion on this item because it's not on the agenda this evening. We would just take a vote, and if this passes, the item on the agenda next council meeting would be referendum question regarding Racine Street Bridge. So at this point, we would take a roll call on that. Why don't you put it right on there? Referendum question. Why don't you just say referendum question regarding Racine Street Bridge? That's it.
Make sure I get all of this.
Yeah.
She gives up that jeopardy.
Does this?
I heard that is that his voice. You heard very wrong, my friend.
I think I had a minute left over. Oh, I had two minutes left over. Okay.
I was just about to play the Jeopardy game.
Okay. At this point, we would take a roll call vote on that.
On the next agenda, but that's all.
Yeah. Alderman Benner, did you? Oh, you're thinking, that's fine.
Motion carries on roll call five, three.
Okay, it'll be appear on the next agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to it there. She has a question.
She, no, you only get one time to speak.
You have one last time left over?
Yes, one time.